Thank you everybody, and good evening to the June 20, 21 Board of Selectment meetings. Finally back in person. Makes a tremendous difference from the Zoom-type meetings, which really are more challenging than you realize. But with that, thank you. I haven't done this in so long, out of practice. For those of you that are in the audience in the event and in the emergency, you would use that stairway that I presume most everybody entered by, which will be on your left, and go up, and that will bring you out to the rear parking lot. If for some reason that's not passable, you can go straight down the hallway out back, which will bring you up the back stairs to the fire department parking lot, or you can go up the stairs right behind the wall with the clock on it, and that will send you out through the double doors out to the Orange Center roadside of the building. With that said, please rise for the board.
I'm gonna use the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ian, where is the flag?
I don't know.
Okay, we'll start with introductions down on my right.
Good evening, Margaret Nowicki.
Good evening, Judy Williams.
Good evening, John Corangelo.
Ben Marino, Town Attorney.
Good evening, Ralph Okenquist.
Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Very good. Is there a motion to close the regular meeting and convene a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is an application for the Neighborhood Assistance Program.
I'm not often told I'm quiet.
I know, it's so weird.
Program from the state of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services for funding for $147,270 for the New Haven Hebrew Day School submitted by Hershey Hecht for Southern Connecticut Hebrew Academy. The legal notice, Town of Orange legal notice, Neighborhood Assistance Program pursuant to Section 12-632 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Orange will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 9th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the lower level meeting room at the Town Hall, 617 Orange Center Road, Orange, Connecticut. To receive comments on an application received for the 2021 Neighborhood Assistance Act program, which will be submitted to the state of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services for funding consideration. The application is on file in the First Selectman's Office and may be reviewed between the hours of 8:30 and 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. Written comments will be received at the First Selectman's Office until 4:00 PM Wednesday, June 9th, 2021. Thereafter, comments should be presented at the public hearing. The following application has been submitted to the Board of Selectmen, Southern Connecticut Hebrew Academy, $147,270 dated Orange, Connecticut, this 13th day of May, 2021, the Orange Board of Selectmen. I did not receive any email concerns on it. Is there anybody in the audience regarding this request? Okay, I know Rabbi Hecht was not able to make it tonight. He made us aware of that. Is there any questions? We've done this on a yearly basis. This is something that, it does not cost the Town of Orange any money. This is more money coming from the state of Connecticut from some fund. They seem to keep finding it, and they apply for this on a yearly basis. So with that said, is there any questions from the table? We're all pretty familiar with this one and have done it before. Okay, with that, is there a motion then? No speakers?
So moved.
Motion to close the hearing.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Unanimous. Very good. Put that one over there. Okay.
Can I vote out?
Right. Is there a motion to be made to support this application?
I'll make a motion to vote to approve on accepting the Neighborhood Assistance Program application submitted by the New Haven Hebrew Day School for funding for $147,270.
Okay, motion made in double second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying unanimous. Okay, public participation. Public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item. We allow up to two minutes per speaker on a topic that is not an agenda topic. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Mr. Pizzano.
I will do that. Again, my name's Tom Pizzano, 523 Fairway Road, Orange, Connecticut, also known as the Orange Soccer Association President for 36 years. I'm here to speak about a public safety issue, and I really would like to dwell on this a little deeper, and I'm not going to be able to do it in two minutes. Do I have a motion by anybody to give me more time than two minutes to talk to you about this public safety issue that we need to, that's urgent to me?
I'll make a motion. Tom, just so you know, Tom was offered to be on the July agenda.
Which we will.
As an agenda item. Not necessarily.
Still like giving the opportunity to speak about it.
Motion made and seconded to extend his time. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I appreciate all the effort here. What I'm really here to talk about is safety at Fred Wolf Park. Although I've been told that if, and all of you have been sent, all of the selectmen have been sent a video showing a car slowly approaching a child that ran in a roadway that now is right next to the soccer fields. But I understand that if the car is going slow and hits the child, I was told in an email that it may not affect the child. But I really think that's a safety issue, no matter what speed the car is going. But I do appreciate the extra time here because I've been known as a big mouth in town, so this time I could really let everybody know what's happening at Fred Wolf Park. One of the things that I'd like to do is just thank this board because this board has done a lot for the children in Orange, and we are seeing tons more children. I know I've said this before, and it just keeps happening. My neighborhood's all new. We have overwhelming number of kids on Sunday soccer and the kids playing at Fred Wolf, and the same thing with the lacrosse program, which some of you know I was involved with that. As a matter of fact, I'd like to throw in a little aside there. There would be no Fred Wolf Park if it wasn't for Tom Pizzano's big mouth. Okay? Anyone would like to litigate that one or talk about that one, we'd do that later, I would say, the night. At any rate, because of that, I'd like to make sure that the kids are safe there. I'd like to make sure that the plan there is thought out, and the improvements, you know, have been great. And they're going to be great. The improvements that are planned at Fred Wolf Park that I'm seeing on plan, it will be fantastic. We have a lot of acreage there, 70 acres, and it's going to be great. The problem, however, is we currently have improved the park and made it unsafe for the children to play in one of our fields. So my current objective today is to see if we can't do something to protect those kids. Right now, a small fence was put up with some criticism, but a small fence, which was nothing more than deer netting, is not sufficient. As all of you have seen, the kids run right through the net, and the balls are going into the road. So we need something permanently 10 feet high, 20 feet high, I'm not sure. But I need somebody to do that. If the board isn't able to do that financially, Orange Soccer will be glad to do that. That's an undue burden to a soccer association after we paid for half of everything at Fred Wolf Park. I don't need to continue to give the kids money that participate in the little kids program to Fred Wolf Park. Although, we have contributed over $240,000 at Fred Wolf Park. Every year, there is $6,000 worth of lawn maintenance spent from Orange Soccer Association. So it's important that we look at this program. What I send you was my video. What I didn't send you is the parents that sent me videos, the parents that approached me and said to me, "You have put my child in a clear and apparent danger." That's a legal term. I don't need that. I had that in 1998, where a parent did sue an Orange Soccer Association President, me, and I had to protect myself and hire a lawyer and the whole thing. Okay? That was the Roseman versus Orange Soccer Association case, in case you want to look it up. So this does happen. We want to protect these kids. This is not something I can do lightly. The last issue I really want to do is make sure that, I don't know how we got here. I really don't. I was told a lot of issues that I should have done, or I talked. I don't know how we got there. I went to Park and Recreation Department to find out how did we get here? How was a rock fence torn down? How was a field built that we can't use? We have a field that's at a slope, and it's not even the correct size for what future use would be. But that's okay. It's not for soccer. That's okay. I'm saying we have fields. We didn't request a field. So I'm not sure how we got here. I just want to know that what is planned there? What is planned there? Can we take the road out? Can we do something? Because we're inviting more and more people there, future plans or playgrounds, other things. We don't want to litigate Fred Wolf here. I can't do that. But, believe me, there will be some parents here at the next meeting wanting to explain why their kids are running in front of cars. They've already approached me. And again, in one case, it wasn't a close call. So I just say, you know, it's important. I understand the importance of moving on. We have step money. Understand the importance of spending that. But what I don't understand is why bulldozing land and improving it was more important than the child's safety. And let's think about that ahead of time. Let's think about doing things before we put our kids in danger. And I guess that's about it. But if anyone wants to talk to me after the meeting, I will stay. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public participation? Okay, is there anything at the table?
Yeah, I would just like to alert the Board of Selectmen that the Amity Boys Lacrosse Team had an undefeated season. They won the Southern Connecticut Conference. They won their first state game. Amity hosted, as a D2 program hosted, home field advantage. Unfortunately, we lost in the second round. Our coach received, apparently, the Coach of the Year. So shout out to the Amity Boys and the coaches for a 17-1 record.
Excellent. Yep, that was on my list. You as a proud parent, I'm glad you did it, did that one instead. Anyone else? Holy smoke. Okay. Few things we had since we last met. Unfortunately, Carolyn Demming, Father Demming's father-wife had passed since we met last. They've been involved here. They moved to Orange in 1972, and both have been intricately involved, both through the Church of Good Shepherd and other town services, both part of the town umbrella and extended branches of the town umbrella for many years. Father Demming is still here over on Barton Drive with people who make sure that he's cared for properly and safe. And so unfortunately, Carolyn passed. Bill Sperry, who worked for the town for many years, his obituary was rather short and sweet, but he gave many years to the town in town service, both as a town employee, a town provider of transportation service to the schools, chairman of the Orange Fair. He was an employee and member of the Water Pollution Control Board. So Bill did a lot of things for a lot of years for the Town of Orange, terrific guy. And...
Jim, real quick, just, Bill Sperry was also a member for many years, as well as chairman, prior to my chairmanship, of the Orange Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission.
Right, he was.
He did a great job there, and was kind of a mentor to me as a chairman. So I tip my hat to him.
I forgot he was on that one. Then unexpectedly, a couple weeks ago now, Fred Kendrick, the registrar of voters, suffered a stroke and a brain bleed and passed away quite quickly and quite unexpectedly. I had been with him two nights prior, and we were talking about all kinds of things and fixing mechanics in airplanes and everything else when he was in the service. And unfortunately, you never know when that may happen, and Eva has taken it strongly, but very unfortunate. And the last one was Rich Arnold, who had battled pancreatic cancer for more than a year or two, and unfortunately, a heart attack is what took him away, quite unexpectedly while he was resting. So it's unfortunate. We lost four people in one month that had been very giving to the Town of Orange. So our thoughts are with all of those families. I actually thought Ralph or somebody would speak on the next one. The Town Budget Referendum. The Town of Orange budget this year was about $76 million, and it was voted on, it passed 169 yes to 61 no. Out of over 10,000 registered voters in the Town of Orange, we barely made it to 230 voters on a $76 million budget. So I don't know if that's a plus or a minus, if people are comfortable, or people don't have time, or COVID kept them in. I don't know what it was, but the budget did pass by 169 to 61. And this is the week, congratulations to all of our graduates. We had the little kids out in back graduating from kindergarten yesterday. The middle school moving up ceremony was this week. The high school, Amity graduated last night down at the tennis now slash music center down there on Route 34 by the Yale Bowl. Some of the other outlying high schools and nursery schools, middle schools are all graduating, wherever your children go that reside here in town. So congratulations to all of them, all of our 2021 graduates. It's nice they were back in school, all mostly for the year. Whereas Bethany had to have a drive-through middle school moving up ceremony because their school board, parent-teacher group decided to have a get-together the week before, and turns out they had an exposure situation there. So the Orange Middle School was able to have a graduation ceremony at the high school, but Bethany had to do a drive-through due to exposure. They were all quarantined. That was on Monday. June is dog license month, remember? Register your dog if you take them out and about, if you go to the town properties everywhere. If the dog wardens, they do show up periodically to check over at Racebrook Track, over at High Plains, and some of the Turkey Hill Preserve, I know. So you can stop at the town clerk's office and get your dog a license. Regular hours have been restored at Case Memorial Library as of June 7th, and curb service is going to be ending on July 2nd. Saturday, June 12th, the Strawberry Festival will take place at the fairgrounds from 10:00 AM to 4:00. The rain date is the 13th. It's a downscaled strawberry festival this year, but nonetheless, the church is having an event. So we're glad for that. The Playground Committee is having a public meeting on Monday, June 14th at 6:30 in the gym at High Plains, and all are invited to attend and find out more about it and how you can get involved. Monday, July 5th, the Fourth of July will be observed. Town offices and the transfer station will be closed on Monday, July 5th. And this is the month of the 199th Town Meeting of the Town of Orange. Yes, and your great-great-grates were there, as were a couple others. It was held, I believe, on June 10th, 1822, and I think it was held in the Congregational Church, actually, was their meeting place at that time. And so we're 199 years old as of this month, and now we're starting to put together that next committee now that the COVID and the rules of the game have been laid out a little bit, that that is coming along also. So some of you will be being tapped for different departments to handle with that. It'll be quite an exciting event. With that said, that's all the announcements. See, I knew you were going to have things. You're just waiting to see what I missed.
Not much. First of all, the last, let's start with the last one first, the bicentennial of the Town of Orange. Are there any, you said you were going to put together a committee which we're waiting for, but is there any dates that have been set for 2022? That committee will set dates for?
It'll be held, I'm presuming, same as they did for the 150th, which was held this week.
In the month?
Back then.
Okay.
The week that the town incorporated.
Incorporated.
Is what I'm anticipating, and you're going to be on that committee, so you'll find out a lot more as it goes.
Thank you. And the other thing, Jim, is I know there was some back and forth, but there was an email that was sent that was asked to be read aloud at tonight's meeting. So I don't know if you have that, or you want somebody else to read it, but...
I'm not reading it because he asked that it be read to the selectmen, and I responded to it, and we still don't have a date, to the best of my knowledge. The dates that were offered didn't work for everybody on that racism task force, so we're going to try with a couple more dates. And offered them, the most recent offer was Monday, Tuesday next week? See, I only need to do the initial meeting to get them all together and get all that, and we're trying, but it's just not gelling. Everybody is extremely busy, and so we're going to try the following week and see if dates work better for some. But when you can only get two one night and three one night.
Yep.
It's not working. So that's what's going on there. And actually, we're short one email, which we now have. I thought we had it. But, so that's what's going on there, and when we can get them together, we'll let you know. All right. Oh, we need to add two because it also has to be an agenda item, even though I'm reluctant to, but it'll go quickly. We need to add the appointment of Steve Heckman to be the representative from Orange for the Greater New Haven Transit District. It has to be an agenda item by their rules, so make that number 15, I guess, if you want.
Second.
Okay. Make item number 15 on there. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item one is to consider an act on request to hang the banner for the fireman. Yes, we are having a fireman's carnival.
Minutes.
Mine doesn't have minutes. Oh, it does. Do we have any errors, omissions, or corrections in the minutes from the May meeting? I am out of practice.
No. So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, consider an act on the request to hang the banner of the volunteer fire department for their carnival, which we missed last year. Is there any motion to be made on that?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Stained? Unanimous? To consider an act on the request to conduct block party in the Ox York Road neighborhood, and received this by way of email. They have the appropriate approvals they're supposed to get from the police department, all if we approve it. So that's a little connector street between Haystack Hill and Wildwood, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
So moved.
All right. All in favor? Consider an act on request to conduct block party in the Mirfield Road neighborhood, which is Mirfield Woodside over there on, well, just off Racebrook Road.
So moved.
Same thing. They've done it before. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, to consider an act on a power purchase and license agreement between the Town of Orange and CEFIA Holding LLC. This is a request for a solar, potential solar installation on the Silverbrook Congregate Housing Building down on Red Cedar Circle. And there's some concerns with it, with the contract and all. So let's see, Kathy Dorgan or, I don't know if either of you guys are here, just one or the other, or someone, who's going to speak, whoever?
Okay.
You come up there.
I don't want to go up together. Use your time as best as possible.
Oh, that's all right. We got plenty.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kathy Dorgan. I'm an architect, and I'm a consultant to the Connecticut Green Bank. The Connecticut Green Bank is a quasi-public agency in the state of Connecticut, and we've been working with the Housing Authority over the last six, eight months to look at opportunities to both lower the cost of electricity, but also to be able to secure it from a solar panel on the roof. And we're very lucky to have John D'Agostino from, affiliate of the Connecticut Green Bank here to talk a little bit about the power purchase agreement and how that's structured, as well as the selected contractor to answer any specific questions. So, John, I'll let you go right ahead.
I have no prepared remarks. I wasn't going to speak. So just to be clear, so my name is John D'Agostino. I am employed by an organization called Inclusive Prosperity Capital. We are a nonprofit spin-out of the Connecticut Green Bank. So for five years, I was a Connecticut Green Bank employee, and now I just work for a different organization that has a professional service agreement with the Green Bank. So effectively, I'm here on behalf of the Green Bank. In short, the proposal is a 20-year power purchase agreement. A power purchase agreement, for those who are unfamiliar, it's just a contract to purchase electricity that is generated by the solar PB system. It's effectively like a lease. The Housing Authority is leasing the roof. In exchange, they're agreeing to purchase electricity, and that electricity is coming at a discount relative to the electricity you would otherwise purchase from United Illuminating. So what the power purchase agreement does, the Green Bank, as an entity, as an organization, is the whole point is a quasi-government agency tasked with deploying more clean energy faster, using fewer public resources, providing that renewable energy, energy efficiency at a discount to existing costs. There's a lot of inefficient electricity consumption, or, you know, what have you in the state. So the PPA offering, as I mentioned, it's 20 years. There's no security to the property itself. We file a UCC-1 on the equipment, so we just have an acknowledgement that we own the equipment, we manage the equipment. We are on the hook for any operations and maintenance, insurance, anything that goes wrong with the system, that's our obligation. Throughout the PPA, there are provisions, obligations for the property owner, in this case, the town, you know, providing site access for the installation of the system, the maintenance of the system, kind of, I would say, standard provisions, but everybody always has feedback on the provisions in the PPA. So on the whole, I know Kathy mentioned we've been readily engaged with Sue Morrow and her team from the Housing Authority for the past six months. I've actually been in touch with Sue for 15 months now. And under the current rules in Connecticut, there's what's called a ZREC program, which is an incentive the state pays. It's a 15-year fixed contract of payment based on the production of the system. Cefia Holdings is a holding company that the Green Bank owns and maintains. So it's effectively, the contract itself can be directly with the Green Bank, it can be with the holding company. We typically do it with the holding company, it's just a little more efficient. And, where was I going with this? So basically, for every kilowatt hour that that system producing, it's displacing a kilowatt hour that would otherwise be purchased from the local utility. Part of the complexity with this particular project is that the Housing Authority is on a specific rate schedule, which there is, I won't go into the depth, but there's a cost that is incurred when you consume a kilowatt hour of electricity, and then there's a cost that is incurred, let's say if all the lights and the washer-dryers are on at the same time, it's called a demand charge. What we're proposing as part of this solar array is switching the rate schedule that the Housing Authority is on to a rate one. Right? It's on GST, and we're switching to rate one. That will eliminate the demand charges, the ladder charge, and it will be a higher consumption charge, but then we're going to provide, basically a 40% discount on that charge. So the math is, I don't want to kind of, I'm happy to share models with you if you want to go through the complexity, but what we're looking to do is effectively, I think, is it a 40% savings, Tom?
So your average cost per unit of energy currently?
You can take that down by your speed.
The average cost per unit of energy right now is around 16 and 1/2 cents, and the rate that we're looking at is just 12 and 1/2 cents. And the big difference is, with the Connecticut Green Bank, that 12 and 1/2 cents will be locked in for 20 years. So what, you know, when we were working with Sue, she said, well, what's difficult with the budgeting, you're just talking about the budget, is predicting what the future costs are. So knowing that we can get about 85 to 90% of the energy use locked in at a certain rate for the next 20 years, it seemed like a big one.
Yeah, it helps you account for it on a go-forward basis. So I can pause there. I mean, if you want to speak to the actual installation, we're not going anywhere. So Tom, representing SurePoint Energy, owns SurePoint Energy, he would be the physical installer of the system.
So we're based in Norwalk, Connecticut, and have been doing this since 2007. We've looked at all the electrical infrastructure, and I think that the timeliness of the project is important to understand that. So John was talking about an incentive called a ZREC, and the deadline to apply for the ZREC is on Monday at 1:00. So...
No pressure.
Yes, so no pressure. So...
We're not going to make that delay.
Okay, so I guess a question is, is it possible?
No. We have a lot of discussion to do on the contract.
Well, I guess what I was, like, what I was going to offer is just that, is it possible to apply for the incentive without necessarily, you know, agreeing to the contract, which sounds like the...
There's no cost to apply to the incentive.
There's no cost to, like, we'll do the legwork, and that would buy us about six weeks.
I mean, I can't tell you what to do or not to do. I just can't recommend to my client to enter into this agreement.
I understand. Is... Is it possible to determine if the agreement would be a good fit for your client in the next six weeks?
I guess that's, depends on how conversations go.
Okay.
I mean, this was presented to me, I think, within the last, this is the first time this body is discussing it. I didn't realize there was a. This is the first time that this body is discussing it, and I didn't realize there was a urgency to the matter, otherwise, we might have had a special meeting. But, you know, there are some concerns that I have, first, from an experience that we had with the Board of Education, where they entered into a similar agreement. And because of the cost of transmitting over unused energy back into the grid, because there's a transmission back cost, it ended up costing the Board of Ed an additional $50,000 instead of saving money. So, that's number one. We have to go through that. And then also, this contract is, while it sounds good, there are a lot of terms, I mean, basically, the town is taking on a lot of liability, a lot of, as the owner of the property. And, you know, I think there needs to be an analysis done, what is the benefit of the savings of the kilowatt hour compared to the value that they're getting through the SRECs and the things of that nature? Because that analysis hasn't been done. You know, the PPAs are generally utilized by people to finance, the people who can't afford to buy, finance the installation of a solar system in exchange for a energy savings. I don't know, it's not, really not a legal question whether or not it's in the best interest of the town. That's a business question, and I think that business analysis needs to be analyzed. At least, that would be my recommendation. And I also, I started going through this before the meeting, and I started redlining it, and I probably have about, I think the contract's forty pages or so, and I have about forty pages of redline.
That'd be a light touch compared to most of my day-to-days of contracts I save.
So, you know, I mean, I think the contract's very one-sided, and it needs to be leveled a bit. There is a thought, you're saying six weeks out, so we meet once a month. If there is the possibility of resolving the contract concerns between parties and parties, it could come back to us and still fall within your six-week window.
Correct.
But there is the possibility that you may not like what our attorney considers appropriate, and you may end up withdrawing or just passing on at that application process that you're on. But if you could correspond, you might be able to resolve your concerns and issues with this for our next meeting. If the council feels that it's been addressed appropriately, it could be put on and voted for the July, I don't know what date it is, meeting. So, that is a possibility there. Jim, I think we would need to meet in an executive session because it's contract negotiations, so you could understand some of these terms. I mean, again, just because I might say as a matter, as the lawyer, it's not my decision. It's the body's decision, and it's my job just to explain the provisions and the exposure that you're taking on behalf of the town. And then you have to balance the benefits, the pros and the cons. So, we may need, I think we need an executive session. Probably as well. And we did have concerns, like attorney already said, we had a lot of problems with the school systems, with the contracts they signed without coming to us. They erred, and it was quite contentious, I'll say, to resolve that issue. And that's why we're cautious to go into it again, and why the attorney is somewhat knowledgeable on it, because he's already been down this path on the Board of Education side of things. I have some concerns with these solar projects, one of this size could potentially, there's a lot of roof there, could potentially generate excess energy. And I don't know what the benefits are to the receiver of the money, I'll call it, I guess is the best way I can say it. If your company is the receiver of the funding for the excess and not the operation of the Silverbrook Congregate Housing, you know, that is a plus for you, but you're already picking up money in other areas, so I don't know. And what the agreements would be with our region is United Illuminating, so I presume your agreement would have to be with, I presume with United Illuminating. And I don't know what United Illuminating, if they decide that they don't need your power today. Obviously, in the summer, days like we've been having, they need all the power they can get. But there's times of the year when they don't need that excess power, and is there, you know, penalties and all? I'd like to know a little bit more about as far as that. And currently, the town of Orange, on all of our town buildings that are under one contract, I think even our streetlights and odd buildings and all, the only thing that is not under our umbrella contract that got missed, we pay eight cents currently for our electricity. So, just, we have a pretty good rate at the moment for all of the town services. So, we have the opportunity to connect with Avon Grid UI, since they're based right here in our town, and, you know, we'll probably have to reach out to them too. And you're not the only solar situation that we're dealing with right now. There's some others that are going to be coming forward that will have some impacts on the town also that we have to look at and consider and see if there's a viability bonus or not also.
So, can I address, you know, some of your list of things, the things you can address, both in process or whatever? And did you want to ask a question also before I went ahead with that?
I've got just a quick question.
Yeah.
I'm feeding through, and it talks about up to fifteen years. You would cover the cost of any repairs or whatnot of the panels and so on? What happens in that last five years? And then what happens? Oh, sorry. Not used to this. So, fifteen years out, my understanding was that all the repairs and everything would be covered by the company. What happens in that last five years of the twenty years? And then what happens on year twenty? When do these things, are they needing to be replaced, removed, and whatnot? So, I just, it just seemed like it was going to be a lot of work, and then all of a sudden...
Okay. So, let's, since those are quite specific, and yours are great and big in general and things like that, let's address those, and I'm going to let John address those two specific questions. So, the first is, from year fifteen to year twenty, who's responsible for maintenance?
I'm not sure where that provision is being pulled from. It's a twenty-year agreement. We're on the hook for twenty years.
Okay.
So, if there's something in there that speaks to fifteen years, that might be the term of the renewable energy certificate. So, it's a fifteen-year contract that would come to us as the system owner. So, we're getting revenue effectively from the utility for fifteen years, but the agreement with the town would be twenty. So, our interface with you is for twenty years, and for that period, we are on the hook for, if a panel breaks, an inverter breaks, the system's not producing for some reason. We're the ones who are paying to send people out to repair it, to do all those things.
So, then what happens on year twenty?
Yeah. So, at year twenty, you have the option to extend the PPA. If you like the service you're receiving, you can extend it. If you would like to purchase the system, you can purchase the system at fair market value. We have a floor price. The IRS doesn't let us say what fair market value is twenty years in the future, but you have the option to purchase at fair market value. Or, we will come out and remove the system at no cost. It's part of the, part of the cost that we, you know, are receiving is apportioning funds for the removal of the system at the end of life. In the long run, these systems typically last thirty years. So, it's in our interest, and I hope in your interest as well, at the end of twenty years, in fact, if you choose to purchase the system, you're receiving free electricity for whatever the system is still producing. The systems degrade about half a percent per year. It depends on the specific one that's being installed. So, there is a slight reduction in production over that twenty years, but by the end of twenty years, they're still producing, I'm making a number, Tom, eighty, eighty percent? Half a percent, twenty years starts.
About eighty-two, eighty-three percent.
So, like, it's still in operating. It's kind of like you have a car, you've driven one hundred fifty thousand miles on it, but it's a great car, it's going to last another seventy-five thousand miles, and you bought it at your lease. You have no payment obligation, but you're receiving all the benefits, effectively free electricity.
But you have twenty years to be thinking about that.
I should also add, and this is, I think, a little bit, depending on the budgeting purposes, you have the option to purchase the system at the end of year six and every year thereafter. Should you choose to allocate bond for it, you can, folks can do that.
If the town were to purchase it, then any of these bonuses, I'll call them benefits, that you spoke of that you received for, I think you said, fifteen years?
Correct.
Would they still go to you for fifteen years?
Nope.
Or, they would go to the town?
They would go to the town.
But it's calculated into your purchase price?
Correct. And there, and, yes, correct. So, the other thing I should add, the reason there is a six-year period before the purchase is offered, and this goes to the benefit to the town as well, is there is a federal investment tax credit worth twenty-six percent of the system cost. So, if the counterparty does not have a federal tax liability, and you were to, say, purchase a system instead of doing a PPA, effectively, that system will be purchased for a twenty-six, thirty percent premium than it would be otherwise. So, what we do is, at the Green Bank, we go out, we have a federal tax credit investor that we bring in who's able to monetize the benefit of that tax credit and pass that benefit along, or some portion of that benefit along. And so, the PPA price that you're seeing, that accounts for the tax credit monetization, the fifteen-year renewable energy certificate value, as well as the revenue from the PPA. So, we kind of crush all of those together, and then we are able to put out a PPA price that's fixed for twenty years. And you're correct, if there's a purchase, we're basically being compensated for the lost revenue on the back end of the contract.
There's no reason to purchase it because you would own it, and then at the end of the twenty years, your roof is almost going to be due again, so you're not going to re-up this panel system without doing another roof. If they're on the roof and they want to re-up it, you tell them that they have to put a new roof on before they re-up the contract. I just was talking with a developer yesterday for a project that needs a roof that's going to be, it's a hundred and, I think he said it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand square foot building here in town, and they have somebody who wants to put a solar array on it. The roof is about a million dollars. Solar company's paying for a new roof on the building before they put the solar array on that roof. That was just a discussion yesterday I had. So, there must be some money in it if they're willing to pay a million dollars for the roof.
I don't have a million dollars for any roof real. I'm sorry.
I think what we want to know is, so what they're retaining is all environmental attributes relating to the SEF or the energy, it's going to remain their property, the solar renewable energy certificates or comparable instruments, all capacity attributes and tax benefits. What is the value of those three things? Obviously, there's value there. And compare that against your value that you're saving, right? Four cents a kilowatt hour presumably, that's, and that's going to grow presumably, that the utility is going to increase that sixteen cents a kilowatt hour presumably. But where are those two numbers? You know, we can't have a true negotiation between the parties without having that information, right? Because you may say, hey, we want part of that solar renewable energy credit for the benefit of the taxpayers here, because it's our municipal property that is going to be generating the income. And so, you know, you may not be getting as good of a deal as you, as, it's never as good as it looks. And so, I think we owe it to ourselves to have the information so that there's full transparency when you're making a decision.
I would just say, it is as good as.
No, 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 no.
It's clearly.
Let them run the numbers. You can run the numbers.
Then the numbers will speak for themselves.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, my question to our council is, realistically, how long would it take you to review the contract that's been presented so that we could have a fruitful discussion about the terms therein? Because obviously, if you have concerns, it's a concern to us. And before, respectfully, you guys go into a diatribe of things that you want to say that benefits the town, I think I need to know the legal terms and what they specifically mean.
I think probably the best route to go would be to.
Table it?
Table it and allow the council to have discussion with, or probably all three parts, I guess, to resolve some of the contract concerns and produce the analysis study he is speaking of also, I think, as part of that thing. We might be able to get it through, parts of it even through, like I already said, we have United Illuminating Avon Grid right here in town. There's people there that probably could, you know, help us on the town side as well, I'm sure, if we need to. But that's what I would do. I would table it at this time, and that will allow the attorney to have interaction with all three pieces of this process. And as far as the six weeks, we'll be meeting in roughly one month. So, you do have the opportunity to apply, so that you can have that opportunity should it come to fruition through your other talks, just so you know. And John, some of this is a business decision, not a legal, but I think I need to make you aware of.
Well, that's the point, and I was alluding to the motion to table it so that we can have an opportunity to.
Right, right. So. You know, and again, I may ask, like, for example, in paragraph three point six B, buyer is, and with buyer, is responsible for paying all sales and use tax assessed against the buyer or the seller. Well, what is that? Is there any? You know, because, again, that four cents a kilowatt hour savings is now getting smaller because if there's added costs within this that you have to reimburse, your benefit is becoming less.
Right.
So, these are things we need to know before we can make an informed decision.
Okay. Well, then, my suggestion.
Motion to table then? Oh, go ahead, yes.
I'll certainly support the motion to table. Just give me a couple of seconds. While these people are here, I'd like to ask a couple of specific questions, if I may. Thank you very much for presentation, and I am intrigued by renewable energy and certainly hope that we can work something out, but certainly respect our legal attorney looking out for our best interests as a town. But I have a couple of specific questions while you're here. You said you've had discussions with Sue Morrow and the, and everybody there. Has the elderly housing committee reviewed this, approved it, recommended it? I see this coming to us directly. Was there any discussion with the committee that exists, I think still exists?
So, we had a meeting a couple of weeks. So, first of all, you know, we've worked with Sue throughout this process and provided information and had, you know, different ways of looking at this and responded to her concerns and things along that. But we did have a meeting, Tom, was it two weeks ago? With three members of her board.
Okay.
Where we had a conversation about it. You know, we, they had in advance a proposal, and they looked through all of the numbers and asked a lot of very good, intelligent questions, as are being asked this evening. Of course, you want to, you know, ask good questions and do it. And so, yes, we did have that review.
But they didn't make any recommendation, per se? They haven't, do you know that they voted on this or recommended it to us? It's just coming to you directly, coming to us from you directly?
So, I'm not sure I can speak to the specific process of that. I mean, I know that along the way, some of the board members have specific expertise, and I think some of them were familiar with the school and had some of the same concerns that I'm hearing tonight brought through. So, I think before that presentation, most of the issues and things that they'd asked about had been addressed, but they had a lot of good operational questions, a lot of good, you know, contractual and just structural questions about, you know, the proposal and how it works and, you know, things like that. But I know, I know that they asked us to come here and speak to you, and Sue is not here tonight because of a family issue. Otherwise, she would have been here to answer those directly, but had, you know, something come up, she, you know.
Thank you. I would ask the first selectman and town attorney to look into the process as to whether we should have a recommendation from that committee first. If it's not necessary, that's fine, but if we should, we should. Second question has to do with, you mentioned eliminating demand charges. Does that something the town or whoever would get if we went with a solar project? That's not something that's allowed otherwise?
So, through, you know, the process of setting electric rates in Connecticut.
Right.
Residential facilities such as Silverbrook multifamily housing have two options of rate structures they can be on. And, you know, they're on one now, and in order to maximize the savings from the solar installation, part of the recommendation is that they change rates.
Okay.
Structures.
But that's something they could do separately?
They could do something separately, but if they just did that without adding the solar, it'd actually probably cost more.
Okay.
So, it's because you're paying more on this rate, you know, more of your charges for the amount of electricity you use, where in the other structure, you know, it's more based on the most used at one point in time.
Okay.
And because the solar produces more over time, you know, and, you know, it's not that that would always be true, that Tom did the math and John checked the math. not that that would always be true, that Tom did the math, and John checked the math, and somebody checked John's, John's math to come to the conclusion that this was, you know, the best option for this project.
Okay. So you also show these rates of 16 cents to 29 cents, electric rates. Is that the distribution rate that can be negotiated, or is that the, is that the direct UI rate without any, like Jim mentioned already, the town has a better than UI rate. And so, are we paying, are we comparing to UI rate, or are we comparing to other rates that, that we can get by going into the market?
Well, we're comparing to the rate you're paying now.
Okay.
In other words, you know, we're not comparing to every rate anybody, anywhere would, but we're comparing to the rate that this property is paying now. And, you know, again, that rate is, the use rate, you know, and the eight cents you're probably talking about is, is probably that. But then, depending on the rate structure you have, you have distribution fees, and you may or may not have other fees, depending on the rate structure. And so, the analysis looked at all of those charges.
Okay. Last question is two parts, real quick. How old is the roof currently?
New. We did that, we did that within the last four years or so with that, that, was it a HUD grant?
Okay. So, so the feeling is that this roof will last through the 20 years?
It's certainly from all, you know, I, I can't say there's not going to be a hurricane or, you know, something, but, you know, it was viewed, part of the analysis, Tom, did. And, you know, we didn't find any deficiencies in the roof, that, you know, the installation and the.
So theoretically, though, if there is a deficiency in the roof, let's say in 15 years, let's say something does have, the roof is leaking, roof needs to be replaced, even though, we all hear about 35 and 50-year roofs, and know they never last that long. So, if, if this roof had to be replaced or repaired, who's responsible? Is it still the town's responsibility to repair the roof?
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah. So to your roof, you're.
Right. But our roof now has solar panels on it, so we are also responsible for the removal of the solar panels, remove the roof, and then put the solar panels back on.
Yes.
If that's what you would choose to do, yes.
Mitch, and you're also then responsible to pay them for the loss in generation during that period of time.
That's, that's a concern. Thank you, thank you. I'll support a motion to table when it's made. Thank you.
I made it.
Okay, motion, motion is made. We let you, so motion is seconded, all in favor?
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you kindly.
Do you leave your contact information with Ann?
Yeah.
And then she'll, you got it? And then it'll go to, you'll be able to do it.
Just a one question. So for the, applying for the incentive, like, we just need like an approval from, like, somebody of the site that says that it's okay that we can apply on your behalf? Who would I coordinate with for that?
Is that not, it's not binding on the municipality in any way?
It's not binding on the municipality in any way.
So, I mean.
Send, send a document, and I'll read it tomorrow, and we can take care of it.
Yes, sir.
Jim, can I ask a couple of questions?
No, it's done. Stable. It's over. You're going to get another opportunity.
Excellent.
Thank you. He was looking for the zoom button to. Julia's used to being muted, I suppose, if I'm not.
Okay. Finally, consider, to consider an act on the request from the Orange Chamber of Commerce for a brick project at the gazebo at High Plains, at the fairgrounds, for the 2022 bicentennial. Ted Novicki is the current president of the Chamber of Commerce. Yes, he is Selectman Novicki's nephew, for full disclosure there. And he just found the last discussion very exciting, and his aunt better talk to him about it at another time. You guys are coming up to discuss your proposal?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'll let you know, I'm testifying in pure the next couple of days, so, but we can definitely touch base, because that was very interesting, and I was involved in the Board of Education.
It was rather timely that he was sitting here. And I'm what, that's why when you saw me smiling, I was looking at him, and he's gone.
So for the office, Jim, Greg, give full disclosure as to why you're saying that.
Yeah, well, that is full disclosure, because his opinion, he didn't like it.
Well, yeah, yeah. You know, taxpayer and, and the rate one that they're going to move you to does not exist. So that, I also found a little interesting. But that's neither here nor there, so. So, yeah, so exactly, thank you, First Selectman Zioli. So what we're looking to do for the chamber is to, we're really looking right now to reinvigorate the community and the local businesses. And, and the way that we're looking to do this i- is by an engraved brick project, similar to the veterans' walkway. And the thought was here that we would look at an area that was non-obtrusive to the Parks Department. I spoke to a couple of folks over there, as well as the director, I think, is that?
Yeah, at the end, Dan Lynch's director.
Yeah, I spoke to Dan as well. I obviously spoke with First Selectman Zioli about this. And really, we obviously had a very rough year. We have a lot of members that are smaller businesses, really the businesses that were most affected by the pandemic. And many of those businesses no longer exist, unfortunately. So this, this project would give both residents, as well as businesses here in the community, as well as surrounding areas, former residents, an opportunity to commemorate the 200th anniversary, the bicentennial of our town, with a engraved brick. And the thought was to wrap it around the gazebo. It, it doesn't pigeonhole us that we can only sell so many bricks. It also does not present any mowing issues or anything along, any kind of obstruction for the, for the Parks Department. So we're asking for your blessing to pursue this. We're, assuming we do get that, we are going to start trying to figure out the price points. We've already gotten a, a number of markups just to see what it looks like. But I think it, in lieu of the Oxon on Parade, I think this will be a great, a great way for, for folks to, which I was a big fan of, by the way.
I thought it was quite interesting.
Al Carbone wanted one right on our front lawn, so.
Really?
Yeah, I told you. Come back to me about that, too.
The only concern I have with it is make sure you're not doing the work. No work can be done. When next, this is for next, well, it'll be before then, it'll, but during the fair, the carnival, you know, the main events that are held on that grounds, you know, whoever your contractor of installation is, you have to make sure that it's not going to collide with any of those.
Absolutely. And to be realistic, we, we may not even have it, you know, and, and we, this would be all on us, that the masonry, everything would all be our responsibility, our cost. It, it may not even be done by that, that actual bicentennial week. Realistically, it might end up coming after the fair in 2022. But we completely understand all the events that occur there, and, and would work within the confines of those.
Just logistic-wise, there's plantings around the gazebo. Are you coming out?
This is out from the.
Yeah, out from the planting.
So you come beyond that?
Yeah.
Those like little nickel lock walls that go up, that hold the shrubs and stuff. So it would be at the base of those nickel lock walls, coming out into what's currently grass, say from the rampway towards the stairs, and continue around that way.
And it'll, Tom, it'll make your, your celebration for the OSA all the better, easier for kids to get up and down. So my son's walked, walked up and down and gotten those trophies before, although he's off to travel now, so.
Promotion is necessary on this. I would make the motion, I guess it's to approve, I guess, the brick project, the Orange Chamber of Commerce at the gazebo at High Plains for the 2022 bicentennial.
Second.
Before we do that part, would you like to bring up your new director?
I would, very much, yes.
To the town, I mean, she was born here and all, but none of you know that. Well, Judy, Judy might. She remembers everybody.
Hi, thank you so much for having me come up and say hello. I'm Kathy Converse Charbonneau. I don't know if any of you recall, my dad was the tax assessor here for over 30 years. It was a while ago, but I used to work in the assessor's office, like, working on the little sketches with a pencil and a razor, where they did them on the little cards, so.
A graph paper.
Yeah, exactly. And also, there was like little, the rounds, things that make, you put around the little holes, the punch holes.
Oh, yeah.
So, I made that, that was my first stop, so. So, I'm really excited to be the new executive director, and, you know, my heart really belongs in Orange. I have a lot of great memories here, growing up. And I'm really excited to help contribute to the businesses here, and to, you know, bring the community together, and, you know, help our businesses who've been through such a difficult time over the past year. So really appreciate you guys approving this, because I think it's going to help us a lot, and be able to help the local business community as well.
Thank you very much.
And I look forward to working with all of you and seeing you again.
Thank you.
I, I met Kathy in my office, but I figured Ted didn't, Ted didn't bring her up.
Sorry. Well, I, I'm at bedtime for my son, so I got to get him to Peck Place. They have a full day tomorrow.
Yes, yes.
It was three, three half-days.
That's all right.
Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So motion was made, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous? Thank you. Okay. Item number six, to consider an act on, wait a minute. Yep. To consider an act on request from the Playground Committee to waive the bidding process and contract with Creative Recreation LLC of West Hartford, Connecticut, which is an approved state bid vendor on the DAS site. So those are the ones the state does the bidding for already.
So moved, I guess.
Question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, um.
I got to tie it to the other part. Go ahead.
Okay. No, we just, two, two, two quick questions for you, Jim. The first is, you know, we're going to approve a vendor, but we have, at this point, besides the fact that it's barrier-free and it'll be at Fred Wolf Park, I don't think we know anything else more about this playground, so.
And that's going to be?
Okay.
I said it. Where is it? Wait a minute, Mitch, hold on, I got it here. It's in my announcements. Here we are. To, 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 to the Playground Committee, Monday the 14th, 6:30, go to High Plains.
I got that, but you're.
That's all I can tell you.
So we're comfortable with, with putting together a contractor before we know what kind of contractor?
They've been, they've been dealing with the contractor. Not me, not this group. And that contractor will then be part of the presentation, the way I understand it, at the Monday night's meeting, is what I've been told.
And, and the second question was, does this, or should this be going through the Park and Recreation Commission at all, or is it strictly through us, as far as the playground? Is there any?
Considering who sent the letter, that's up to her to make sure.
Okay.
Once, once it goes to the, after the public presentation part and input, when it kind of gets a little more finalized.
Okay.
This bidding part doesn't have to go to them, but the layout and all that.
That's what I meant. Layout, parking is, the installation, you know, accessibility. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Ralph.
Why, why do they want to go without a bid?
Because they're using the state bid site. The Department of Administrative Services of the State of Connecticut has bids for all kinds of things, whether you want to buy a truck, or a playground, or copy your paper by the pallet.
Salt.
The salt, we use the salt bid. They do all those things, so that's why. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven, to consider an act on the approval of the bid recommendation for containerized refuse service at town buildings, Mr. Brinton. Yeah.
Who does it now for?
All American.
You've got, you have the, the bid results, the low bidder is Country Disposal Services. We checked the references, and, and they were good. We haven't had any trouble with the current vendor. It's really just a low bidder situation.
Motion to approve Country Disposal Services LLC?
I have to ask, is there anybody that would like to speak on this topic? Yes, sir. You have to come to the podium. Yes. Have to sign the, oh.
There's nothing.
Yeah, and I thought there was, somebody took your sheet. All right, so your name for the.
Mike Latella, 782 Riverside Drive in Orange. I'm speaking on behalf of All American Waste. The current hauler, we've actually been doing the service since 2003, I believe. Questions that I have on the town engineer's recommendation is, by Town Charter Code 11-2 and 11-3, effective delinquent payments on bidder eligibility should disqualify the low bidder from the contract. Reason being is, he is not paying any taxes on any commercialized container services in town, on any commercial containers. That's per the Tax Assessor's website, there's nothing on there. 11-4, part of the bid submission and review, considering past performance, financial responsibility, and sales and service experience of the vendors, I call on the question whatever past experience or diligence that the town engineer has done on the town's behalf. Reason why I bring that up is because there's some active litigation going on with Country Disposal, one with the New Haven Solid Waste Authority, which is in relation to violations. It's an active case, roughly $51,000 in fines. One of the allegations is not abiding by the flow control ordinance, bringing material to the town transfer station, and knowingly mixing recycling with MSW trash. One of the other open cases that's going on right now is in regards to disposal. That pending amount is $359,464.86. There was another court case that just closed. There was actually an injunction with an asset freeze of $540,000, 540, 62224. And that one just closed roughly about a month or so ago. That was in relation to country disposal and city carting. And then if you go on through the town charter, the code, I would also call on the question code 331-1, code 199-4A and D, and code 331-15.
Bob, did you do a background on this bidder? Was, were there any problems or issues that you discovered, or?
The one thing I just want to throw in before I step away for him, is the price differential we're talking about is $186.09 per month, over the four-year term.
True. But a bid is a bid, and sometimes you win them, and sometimes you lose them. But your other, your other concerns are the question to consider. Did you speak to other places where they provide service? Were there any problems that you're aware of? What type of things did you ask whoever you may have checked with?
The, the references were all good. And the second low bidder, who just spoke, left information, which he referred to about some lawsuits they're, they're involved in. And there, as he said, there are two lawsuits the company's involved in. I didn't think the risk is significant for the town of Orange. We just wanted them to pick up some dumpsters and take them away, unless they, unless the results of the litigation are such that they go bankrupt and they can't service us. The New Haven one is, New Haven wants all, there's, everything picked up, commercial accounts and stuff, to go to the New Haven Transfer Station.
Low control.
Yeah. And that doesn't really have anything to do with ours. And the other one had to do with the person, one of the partners in this company is also a partner in a transfer station in Wallingford. They bought out the former trashed energy plant. And again, unless it's a, just a question of losing money, it doesn't really have to do with our.
So you checked all those things, and they don't affect the town of Orange?
Yeah.
Other than if they were to sell out or close out?
Right.
Okay. So you're comfortable with your.
Yeah, and I'm not aware of, I didn't check, but I'm not aware of any taxes that they're not paying.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't even know that dumpsters in the different communities paid taxes in those communities.
Nor did I.
I never heard that one before.
It's under declared property tax.
Well, that's an interesting one, because I've never.
Which were current on.
Well, I'm sure. You wouldn't have brought it up if you weren't. I never even knew that was a thing, because if you think about it, there's not as many vendors as there used to be, but there still are quite a, quite a few different. but there still are quite a, quite a few different vendors, just if you go up and down our Post Road. So that, and you know all of them as well as others, and so I, that's interesting, because, you know, I think about, I'm always looking for revenue, and I'm, I'm thinking of some, and some it'll be a headache to chase, and others, but I know All-American is the leader, as far as dumpster service across the state of Connecticut, they are the largest without a doubt, and I'm fully aware of that. But, that's...
The one thing that I'd like to add, since the Town Engineer did bring it up, was he was talking in regards to bankruptcy or sale. The close case that just closed between city carding and Country Disposal, with the asset freeze of $540,000. That was actually, the injunction was part of a sale of a portion of the business of Country Disposal to John's Refuge, which Country Disposal owed the revenue for tipping fees to city carding. In the midst of the litigation, while that sale was going on, those assets were froze on behalf of the plaintiff, in order to fund city carding for what their litigation was, if you could follow that.
I understand it, because I know the different pieces of it, but I have a feeling, I'm sitting here looking at Margaret going, "What the hell are you talking about?" I do, I do understand what you just said.
Again, my point of it is, is it, going by the Town Charter and the code, as it pertains to Sections 11-2 to 11-4, my opinion and belief is that it disqualifies the low bidder.
Well, it, it doesn't disqualify them on the fact, I don't think, because none of it is Town of Orange's business. They may have issues and concerns in other communities, businesses where they dump and/or pick up, or that sort of thing, but that's, as Mr. Britton said, isn't, the Town of Orange's issue.
I was gonna say, I think what the Speaker is, what the Speaker means is, not, it doesn't disqualify, but the town reserves the right to award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder. And so based upon what the Speaker is saying, he's, I think he's saying that, that the lowest bidder is not as responsible as we are, and you should take this into consideration in awarding to the lowest responsible bidder. I believe, because it's not, it doesn't disqualify the lowest bidder on the face of the bid.
Just a question, though?
Yes.
When you're referring that they're not paying taxes, this has nothing to do with the Town of Orange at this point? Are these tax obligation for any other towns and cities across this state that you're aware of?
It's tax obligations to the Town of Orange for containerized commercial services.
And I have no idea, Michael, who's on that list in the assessor's office? Because I didn't even know, this, this is a new one for me.
Yeah.
Who's on that list that pays taxes for dumpsters in the Town of Orange, besides All-American?
All-American Waste.
That's it. So see, none of the other vendors are doing this. I never even considered it, I always considered it a temporary use.
Yeah, I mean, but again, you know, my, my concern is, none of us were aware of this, and, and we have somebody who's actually paying the town for taxes. You know, is it...
When did you start paying the town taxes on the...
2003, I believe.
I mean, I'm just wondering if we can educate ourselves with finding out a little more about this before we award somebody for something that they're doing wrong in our town. They should be paying taxes like everybody else is. I mean, again, this is new information to me, I mean...
Hmm, I agree, but how many cans do they have in Orange? Come on, you know.
Do you know?
I, I don't know, I mean, because it, country could have them, city could have them, Knicks could have them, Andy could have them, I don't know who has them. You go down to Post Road, there's cans with everybody's sticker on them, so I, the only one paying is All-American. How much do you pay a year in taxes?
I think it's, uh, I've got that number too.
I knew you would.
$1,140.66.
All right, that still doesn't make up the difference in the bid, though, we're still losing money.
You didn't ask that question.
All right, the board has to decide what they wish to, wish to do on it. I do appreciate that, because you brought some stuff to light there, Michael, that I never even considered, dumpsters paying taxes. That's a, that's a... Yes, Ralph? Zoom.
Zoom. Back in, I think it was 2004, New Haven got the right to tax all those cranes down there that were building I-95 and 91 over.
Because they were there for more than a period of time.
And they were there for a long period of time, and New Haven got the right to tax them, because they were permanently there for whatever the timeframe is it has to be, but, I mean, they were there for years.
Oh, yeah, well, it's, it's a similar issue, we're gonna, I don't wanna diverge too far off the topic here, but I've been having discussions with the people from Amazon, because those hundreds of blue vans you're seeing, and private operator vans that you're seeing that are traveling Orange, are, Orange is not benefiting one bit, and I'm in a situation with them at this point. They're not loving me this week, but... Life stuff. So, I mean, so I do think of it something, I just never thought of dumpsters. So that's a whole nother area. So it's up to this group to decide what you wanna do.
I'll just start some discussion, I guess, I'll still make a motion I was gonna make before. To go with Country Disposal, it is the low bidder, it is recommended by our Town Engineer. So, I would make that as a motion.
Second for discussion.
Second for a discussion.
My concern to this board, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, Margaret, you're free to take the, the rein.
Here you go, okay. Okay, well, I think, looking at the difference in the rates between the company, All-American, that we're currently using, and a new country, a new company, Country Disposal, in light of the fact that All-American is paying taxes to our town, does it seem to me that the difference is significant? So from my perspective, I would rather use a company that has been proven to have performed well for the town, than risk a company that is in litigation, et cetera. That's my view.
Rob?
The only thing I was gonna mention, and I'm not fearful of, of litigation, everybody gets sued on any given day. I'm sure there's lawsuits pending against every one of these companies, but what I'm most concerned is that none of us was aware about these personal property taxes on the bins, on the refuse containers. And I don't know, I mean, and, and again, Bob, I respect your opinion and your recommendation, but I think you even mentioned that you weren't aware of it either, so, I mean, that's my reluctance here. I mean, I just don't think it's, it's fair that, that, that we're gonna award somebody a, a bid to work for this town, and they're not paying taxes, and I don't care whether it's $1,100 or $50. It's not appropriate. I think you gotta be current in this town and pay your share of taxes to be awarded a bid to work for this town. That's, that's my, that's my two cents for discussion.
I'm gonna ask a question, and you can stay there and just nod on this one. Is it normal knowledge that when you're, whether you're in Orange, or Milford, or Bloomfield, or Falls Village, that if you have cans in that town, you know that you'd report them for a tax situation?
Ken Belair, Director for All-American Waste. We operate, as you already alluded to, in quite a few of the towns throughout Connecticut, and in every single town. The Tax Assessor and Tax Department does get a statement from our company, and in any other company I've ever, ever done, I've been in the business since 1982.
You provide it voluntarily to that town?
Nope, the, the towns, in, in a lot of towns, the Town Assessor sends out notices, asks for new declarations.
The personal property, yeah.
They send out all of that, and, and it's our responsibility to respond, or the town will just go out and do an audit, and, and tax based on what they find, as opposed to what we put in for any equipment.
Approximately, how many cans do you think you have in the Town of Orange?
Um, I did not poll at, uh...
Ballpark.
It'd be a few, I believe.
I think so. Okay. That's good. That's all.
Yeah, response to John's concerns, they are concerns. So I, I would say that, if possible, if, if the Town Engineer thinks it's okay, I would like to table this, because I think we need some answers from our assessor, based on the last comments, whether our assessor even assesses the, anybody else, or All-American does this based on voluntary. There's also some, some, some real allegations made about, you know, litigation and things like that, that were pretty strong. I, I think it's, even though this is an open meeting, I'm a little hesitant to make a decision based on the information that's provided tonight, without having someone from Country Disposal give us their side of the story. I, I just think it's, if we could table this, I'd like to do that, but, I mean, if, Bob, you say we don't have the time, or we need a special meeting, let us know that right now, because, you know, it just seems, it just seems there's enough, enough questions, and I think we're all questioning it, that it may be better to get a response from Country, or at least our assessor, or, because we all are sitting here not knowing about this tax situation, so...
All right, would All-American be willing to go one more month, as you currently are, so that that would allow the selectmen to invite the other, the low bidder, in to the meeting, as this meeting is tonight that you sat through, so that this board could question them in public as to these concerns? It would be a one, I guess it would be, when's your contract run out, the end of June? So would you take a one-month, extend it for one month to the end of July, on the risk of maybe you get the job? Maybe you don't?
I would go further than that at this point, and say we, we match the price.
That I don't know if we can do, once it's there, I can't answer that at the moment, but if you consider that one-month extension, and so that, and it will be another public meeting, so I mean, you can be here also, to hear...
My concerns with the extension at this point would be, I know some of the references that we put forth were also references that had done business with Country. I'm, I'm confident, because I know that, that municipality is in suit with Country for, for their actions with their transfer station, and on that, that is one of the suits that's there, and I believe the town itself has litigation going separately that hasn't come out yet. I, I think that's a bigger issue than, than what's on the surface at this point.
All right, but still, we can, in, next month's meeting, we can invite Michael, and if he wants to bring help with him to have discuss, that discussion, they'll be at the podium to explain there.
And my hesitancy on it is just, if you wanted to extend it for, for, for a year term, I would probably do that, the month by month, so that, you know, in, in our opinion, unqualified bidder has an opportunity to get around the issue, and, and in our opinion, usually. I, I'm not sure I want to accommodate that.
Okay. All right.
Could, could we ask maybe Town Council or something to go, like really research and see what's going on? I mean, to go in and see what the legalities are going, the suits and stuff, what they are involved, and, and why, a little more detail? Can we get that information?
You wanna research that?
It's a public record.
Yeah.
But I, I'm more concerned about knowing from our assessor whether we...
Right.
Solicit all the vendors.
Part of the problem with, all I would be able to do is to validate the pendency of any proceeding. The legitimacy of that proceeding, the merits, is not for me to adjudicate. You know, just, just because someone said, "You're guilty," doesn't mean you're guilty, right? So, but I can, I can validate it, and we can look at the allegations.
Right.
You know, I mean, and you can consider those, but again, it's gonna be whatever it says.
So if, if we've got the contract going until June 30th, correct, right now? Could we, could we call a special meeting and, and decide that prior to the June 30th? And that would alleviate...
We may be having a special meeting coming up anyhow, because of another lease that this group has to see.
Okay.
I met with them today, and they had a few minor issues, so that's gonna be a, we are gonna have a special meeting before the end of the month.
So can we...
I would say let's do that then, if we can.
And meanwhile, we can talk to the assessor, and we can find out what's going on.
Okay.
A little more information.
All right, so at this time, it's another one that you wanna table?
Table. Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's where I'll sit at the moment then. Thank you. Okay. To consider an act on bid recommendation, you might wanna hear this, you might know these players too, for wooden brush grinding. Uh, to consider an act and bid recommendation for wooden brush grinding and disposal, Bob Britton again.
Okay, went out to bid for grinding and removal of lugs and brush from the transfer station. The low bidder was the current vendor, A&amp;M Wood Recycling. But if you see in there, they, they did take an exception to the requirement that they remove their equipment. Basically, they just leave their stuff on site, and this past year, there was, it took them most of the year to grind and remove everything, granted, there was a lot from the storm in, in August. But it did kinda cause us a problem, because they, they ground it up, but then they refused to remove it, because it, they said, "Oh, there's a glut of wood now, no, you know, I can't get rid of it."
Not your problem.
But our, our contract wasn't like, "Take it away if it's convenient for you." And then by sitting around and getting wet, it started lighting itself on fire.
Multiple times.
Yes.
Multiple fires.
So, you know, otherwise, you know, they, they can't say A&amp;M's really bad, it's just those, those issues would make us consider, and that, that's why I was recommending we look at the second low bidder. It is significantly more money. They're in Milford, and the two municipalities I talked to, Stanford and Milford, had good, good reviews, but as I'm sure you imagine, most of these contractors are smart enough to provide references that will give them good reviews.
Do you know about any of the business that Roal does?
I've heard of them, but I'm not...
They do topsoil, they do mulches, they do recycle, all those waste products.
They've been around for a while.
Yeah. The, the trouble with A&amp;M, with time, what's happened to Mr. Monaco, they used to have a yard in Shelton, up behind where Winter Brothers was up there, the recycling place. They lost that yard, so he has a truck, a tractor, trailer truck, two walking floor trailers, an excavator, I think a backhoe, the tub grinder trailer unit, and a payloader are all residing at the Zero Orange Center Road.
Tax them?
Good point. But he has nowhere to take all this equipment, and that truck gets in the way, and he has not even finished out hauling all of the last grinding. The one before that took months. Now, if that's not an issue to you?
Yeah.
Then you can go with A&amp;M. But the problem is, he's not able to, he takes, he calls a lot of it, I think he goes to Earthgrow, which is also another mulch manufacturer up in, I don't know, I think in Lebanon, I think they're in...
I think it's almost Rhode Island, yeah. A&amp;M does that, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's current. And, you know, so, they're terrific people, they try hard, but that's why he's giving you, you know, a $40 a ton price, you know, versus the 66, so it's $26 a ton difference, and, you know, that's significant, so how concerned are you with two, two items? Number one, his equipment parked on your site, and how fast he gets rid of stuff. One day I pulled in there, I was going to dump some stuff, and I see a guy parked there, and pails, and he stuffed around, I go, I go to one of our men, I go, "What the hell is that guy doing over there?" "Oh, he's servicing his truck, he's changing the oil and stuff." So he's doing his service and all on our site. That's when it starts to get concerning, that's, that's the concerning, but it's $26 a ton difference. But it's $26 a ton difference.
Oh. In the past, we've been averaging 1,000 a year, 1,000 tons. Past few years it's been more.
Because of the storms, it's gone up to two, three tons, you know, 1,000 tons. So it's, you know, $26, 1,000 in a, in a normal year. So I mean, it's, it is significant money, but it.
But they're not doing the job.
They're not able to keep up.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like, and it is tough. I know land is very difficult to hang on to. And if you don't have a yard to have all of your equipment in so that you can service it there and so on. And then it sounds like he's scrambling as best he can. But the bottom line is we need a service done. And so we've got to get somebody who can do that.
Right. So he's. Service work, very. But if you think, but if you think about it, he's essentially paying you at minimum $26,000 a year. It could be $75,000 a year for not, for giving you that reduced rate. So you're getting a significant, you're basically getting rent. You know, in a kind of a abstract kind of way for letting him keep there. Mitch?
Yeah, Jim, that, that is one way of looking at it. But you know, unlike, we discussed this with the last bid, you know, looking for the lowest responsive bidder. And I would say that this is not a responsive bidder for all the reasons that have been said. It's not just one thing.
Right, right.
It's not just leaving the equipment there. By the way, as the town engineer pointed out, he made, he took an exception to our, to our bid and said contractor to leave some equipment on site when the bid specifically, according to Bob, says you're not supposed to leave equipment on site. We have that issue, the, the other issues that you just mentioned about servicing vehicles, taking up space, which we don't necessarily have.
It's a little limited.
The combustion fires really bothers me. We're exercising volunteer fire department to come out and put out fires that never should have happened in the first place. You're right, Jim, it is, it is more. And I hate to not go with the lowest bid, but it's also the second lowest bid is significantly less than the third and the fourth.
Yeah.
So it's not like we're looking at a high bid, we're looking at the second lowest. And therefore, you know, based on.
You're probably looking at an appropriate bid, the second one.
Yeah. So therefore, I would disqualify the low bid for not being responsive to the qualifications that were put out. And I would put on the table to recommend that this board approve the second low bidder, Grillo Services LLC of Milford, for disposal of wooden brush at the rate of $66 per ton. For, it's a two-year period, right, Bob?
Yes, two years. Second.
Motion made and seconded to go with Grillo Services. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Unanimous? Item number nine, to consider an act on bid recommendations for Case Memorial Library, HVAC Maintenance. Mr. Britton?
Went out to bid, we received four bids. The low bidder is the current vendor, I think has been for several bid periods at least. We're happy with the performance. Finally got an easy one?
Life's good.
Motion, motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained unanimous. Item number 10, to consider an act on bid recommendation for fire sprinkler systems, inspection and maintenance.
Okay, we went out to bid, this one was a three-year contract. And we ended up having three bidders. The low bid is ADT Commercial. I contacted them and verified you do know it's sprinklers, not alarms. But I guess they, in the past, had bought out a company that does sprinklers. We checked some references and they were all good. Connecticut Children's Medical Center, I think Sacred Heart. And I don't have down here which is, I think it's a housing authority. So anyway, everyone, everyone we spoke to was happy with the way they, they served, inspected and serviced the sprinkler systems. Our current contractor did not bid on it, although they were invited to. I don't know whether they're winding down their business, maybe they don't want to commit to three years.
Okay, so your recommendation on this one, is this ADT Commercial?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Item number 11. All right? Yep. To consider an act on bid recommendation for fire and intrusion alarm inspection, maintenance, monitoring and repair.
We went out with a three-year contract. We received three bids. And the memo, I've just totaled up the inspection and the monitoring for an annual total. The low bidder was Open System Metro New York.
Just going to adjust this a little bit.
Get taller. And second low bidder was American Total Protection. They're in Hamden. And W&amp;M Fire Protection, I think is upstate. Anyway, I was not recommending Open System Metro New York because they're out of, I think, Westchester County, 90 minutes or two hours away. Probably would do the, you know, the scheduled inspections fine, but we'll be paying for service calls. FireTech is the current contractor, they did not bid on it. But they made an offer to the town to roll over the contract at the current pricing, so I included that in here. So this does make it messier than the last couple.
So, so you said FireTech did not, so are we looking at their bid?
I've included it here.
The reason, the reason Judy is, because they are the current and have been the current operator of this bid.
Okay.
So that they were evidently thought that since they already operate the system and function the system, that they didn't have to do the walkthrough, which I kind of agree with for what this particular item is. Yeah, I just saw one over here too, they're coming out in the night. So that's, and how did they compare ultimately, Bob, to your other bidders?
They're very close in price to that American Total Protection. When American Total Protection actually gave us two prices. One to monitor all the, all the accounts that are currently being monitored and one to monitor all the ones that are in the bid. There's a few that are, there's a few that are not being monitored currently. So that alarms will go off in the building, but not dial out to the monitoring center who would then call the police. So anyway, the prices are very close between the FireTech and American Total Protection. So it's kind of a policy choice of if you want to pick the bidder, then you have to go with.
Looks like they're the same price.
Basically the same, yeah.
I think they're the same price. Yes.
I'll make a motion in a minute to reject all the bids. This, this is, this is messy. And it's messy for a number of reasons. You know, I understand what Jim just said about FireTech. We just sat here and rejected American, All-American for making almost the same, same offer to us outside of the proposal. I would recommend that the bids all be rejected and we go back out. And there's two reasons for that. One is to clean up this whole thing, have everybody put it in at the same time. Second reason is, as Bob and I were discussing, because I saw the 12 and the 15, he started just explaining it. You know, we've got a couple of accounts that were being charged for, for monitoring that aren't even being monitored because they don't, they don't go anywhere. And that's an issue I think that Bob and I have discussed in the last 24 hours, that I think we need to get some more answers on and clean that up and then rebid this. And if the, if the rebid is that we can get those other alarm systems up and running, we should. And if we can't, we're going to need a separate bid to do that. It doesn't make sense to be monitoring burglar alarms that just ring and don't go anywhere. So, and I give credit to American Total Protection for actually bidding that way because they recognized it and brought it to our attention. So that, with that, I'll make a motion to, I guess, table, but also with the recommendation that table it because we should rebid this after those questions have been answered. That's my recommendation tonight. Motion to table?
Okay, motion made, double seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So they'll get an opportunity to rebid. Bob, have that one for next month?
I think, I think so, yeah. Or sooner. Well. Would you just play July first? No, our process would take longer than, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay. To consider an act on the bid recommendation for High Plains Community Center Utility, Tunnel Steam and Condensate Pipe Repairs. This is one of those projects that's, I think, being paid for under capital plan, isn't it, Ralph? Yeah, I think that's where this came from. And what did you have estimated? Do you have that with you, do you recall?
Thought it was.
Two something.
230 or something like that.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was two and a quarter or something like that myself. And they only received one bid on it. And it's Rotolo Mechanical, that has done a lot of work for us. They did a lot of work in the, above, above the tunnels work, I think, didn't they, Mitch?
Yes, they did.
They did that?
Well, they planted, they planted.
They did that, okay. So their bid actually came in, I guess, almost $50,000 less than anticipated initially. So that's, yeah, that's a good one. And the contractor does live here in town and has, yeah. And, and has already done, has done extensive work with that wing of remodeling. So he's familiar with what he's going to get into. And that's why we did all that abatement and stuff that we paid for in all those tunnels three years ago, I think we did all that abatement and all. So if that's the case, you had, it was duly advertised, you had one bidder?
Motion to approve?
Mitch, was his work all satisfactory?
Yeah, the work was satisfactory. Like any contractor, there's always something, but the work was satisfactory. And you're right, Rotolo Mechanical does have a lot of knowledge of what is in that utility tunnel steam business. He's, he's been down there to places that none of us would go.
It's pretty creepy if you ever want to go in there. If you're claustrophobic or anything, you don't want to go in there.
The point of me saying that is I think that the, he's familiar with the, the community center and the tunnel steam and system down there. So I feel confident that the bid is, is appropriate.
Okay. Motion made, right?
And seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Unanimous on that one? Okay, Bob. 13th, to consider an act on the license agreement between the Town of Orange and the Nursery School. We sent it to Danielle with a higher number, came back with, which I think Aunt shared that with you, right? Didn't you get the original, the first draft out? Yeah, well, this is the final draft, but final. This is where we came out with them, it has a little bit of growth in it over what they are. They're currently paying 700 and change, this puts them up to 1,200 and change. It's three years, not five years. I offered them a higher number and that we would invest in some playground improvements for them there also. And if we find something, they'd be happy. If not, they're happy. They want to stay there, they don't want to leave. They were all pretty amicable. They both, the director and the treasurer came in and we hammered it out. And so we had talked with, the only thing was it, it kind of had set up a little concern for them, but it's the only out in the lease was the, if the town needs it. So I checked with Mary L. Tracy because they're at a precarious point with being full, but not, they felt that, they went down there, looked at it and all, and they felt that they could survive at this time without needing that space for their pre-K program. So I said, okay. So that's why it's only a three-year lease instead of five. Because if you think about it, we've had a tremendous amount of real estate transactions in this town in the last six months. And with the COVID and all, and it sounds a little funny, but there is a tremendous amount of baby boom. So in five years, well, they'll be in four years, the nursery school, but the kindergarten's going to be hitting in five approximately. So I, we talked about that in our meeting. You know, they may, the Mary L. Tracy might need space in some way, shape or form. So that's how it come, it ended up that way. So if that's okay, and anybody.
So she is, she hasn't signed this, has she agreed to it?
Well, she agreed to it. Yeah, we met and met twice. And no, she wouldn't sign it until after this board approves it.
Well, she signed first, then they approved it.
No, 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 because what happens if you want to change something?
Until you sign it, they approve it.
Yeah. So, well, yeah, true. So is there a motion to, for this?
Motion, motion made to act on the license agreement between the Town of Orange and the Orange Community Nursery School as presented.
Second.
Second made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Unanimous? Okay. To consider an act on the approval of tax refunds for June in the amount of $6,593.43.
Second.
I don't know who this one is, is that right at the top? But boy, they sure paid a lot on their bills. Boy, look at the next one down, look who it is. Paid a real lot. Yeah, none of us are on this.
We're using a $3,000 difference.
Yeah, wow, the top one is, two more down a little further. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Unanimous? Okay, you see the appointments there, no.
Steve Heckman?
Steve Heckman, we approved it. Oh yeah, we got to do it here. Yeah, item 15 is to consider an act on Steve Heckman as an appointment for the Town of Orange representative to the Greater New Haven Transit District to replace Charlie Smythe, who was on it for quite a few years and passed away unfortunately. And it took a long time to find somebody. And Hecky said, I really want to get involved in something. And I said to him, Hecky, I can't put you on, and he's watching at home probably. I said, Hecky, I can't put you on anything in town because you'll put it in your newspaper. And some board, and sometimes the boards and commission stuff, you can't do that. And so then I found this and he actually really, he went down, he talked to the, or I don't know if he went down or called them, and he came back and said, I'd like to do that. So.
So moved to appoint Steve Heckman to Greater New Haven Transit District as our representative.
And that's that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Committees, pension board?
Yes, the pension board met with the Board of Finance for the first time, I think, probably ever. We had a very, very productive and eye-opening meeting, especially the eyes being opened of the Board of Finance. Excellent questions were asked. And we had our consultants at this meeting. It was all done by Zoom and it was on OGAT. So our, our consultant concerning our, our investments gave the year end and also the first quarter. But just so you're aware, our return for calendar year 2020 was 14.3% on our pension, which was excellent, following a 19.4% the year before. So we feel that we're in very good shape as far as our investments go. That's from Fiducient, which is the new name of our, of our, the same advisor we've had. And we also had the actual evaluation report given to us as a preliminary. We have not, as a board, yet voted on it to make recommendations for next year's budget. But just so everyone's aware, the, the police pension only has three, as of, as of January 1st, 2021, only has three active members left. Everyone else is either pay status or terminated, that they would be in pay status at some point. And then the town plan, once again, as of January 1st, 2021, just has four members left in that, active members left. We've got 62 people being paid out and four others terminated that will be invested, that will be paid out eventually. So really getting closer and closer to the closing out of the plans completely, except we'd have to pay people for years.
Well, you start to fund it.
Years, years to come. And also wanted to report that you probably saw in your last, last month's memo from Jim, that Rebecca Harlow was appointed to the pension board. She attended her first meeting and I said to Rebecca, you learn more in one night than it'd take five years for the rest of us to learn. It was quite a very interesting meeting and she represents town employees on that, on that board. So thank you very much. If any questions, we're glad to take them.
Nope. Emergency Management, Margaret?
Thank you. The last meeting of the Emergency Management Subcommittee on COVID was held on Friday, May 21st. The Subcommittee henceforth will be having meetings just once a month instead of every other week. And we will be having them on the second Friday of every month, starting on June 11th. The good news is Orange is doing great on the COVID front. As of our meeting on May 21st, we had only four. As of our meeting on May 21st, we had only four COVID cases over the previous three weeks to that. Our last COVID clinic was on May 27th, and since then, we've had no new cases, so that is very encouraging. Just in terms of an overall number, as of the beginning of June, the overall total number of cases in Orange from the very beginning of the pandemic till the beginning of June was 1,096 with 19 deaths. In terms of vaccinations, 66% of Orange residents have received one dose and 58% are fully vaccinated. The team that has been giving out, uh, the, the vaccinations reached our target threshold of 50% by the summer, um, early, I mean, that was, that, we reached that way early. So I think, you know, we really deserve, the, we really need to give a big congratulations to our Public Health Department, OVNA, CERT, and all the volunteers that, that undertook this effort, really commendable, they did a fabulous job.
And you lost your CERT leader.
Yes, exactly.
With many, Ken Life.
Exactly.
Forgot to put him on the list.
Yeah.
What did he do last time?
Did he die last month already?
Yes, that's right.
You're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's just, yeah.
Yes.
Where did you get the numbers?
From, from our, from our.
Those are our numbers.
From Dr. Mohammed.
Okay.
Yes. So he gets it from the state data, yeah. Oh, it's all compiled in one.
Department of Public Health, Ralph. Well, you have to search for it, but yeah.
Yes, yeah, it's the official figures, and he said, you know, there may be updates since those figures were, were put out. The State Department of Public Health is pairing with our local health department to bring mobile vaccination vans for businesses, for religious organizations and at public events, um, they're working on this now, the logistics for that.
I think they're going to be at Avant Grid.
I, I think they may have already done Avant Grid.
They did it once, but they're doing, on the 24th, I think, they're doing it again, I read somewhere.
So this is a great initiative that is at no cost to the town and, um, if there are companies and businesses out there that need, uh, a van to come to give vaccinations, they should let our Public Health Department know.
Yeah, they're doing the one shots, I think, the Johnson Johnson.
I think so, yes, I think so.
Because they're worried that, like in the urban areas, they were doing the one shot because they're afraid.
Yeah, that the people won't come back, correct.
They may come once and you may not see them again.
Yes.
So, um, but anyhow, excellent, excellent.
So that's about it, um, we will continue to keep an eye on developments over the course of the summer as, as our town is opening up to normalcy again, and, um, if there is a need for booster shots in the fall, we would be ready to reopen for booster shots.
Yep, absolutely. Yes, Mitch?
Margaret, you, you, you thank a lot of people, and I think it's important, we also thank Dr. Mohammed for all his spearheading of everything he did throughout this whole thing, um, and keeping us all in the know and keeping those clinics going, and that's probably a good reason why we've got those numbers, that's great.
Absolutely. Well, I was including him in our Public Health Department, but yes, he does deserve